All right, okay. Now that Mark's done, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner. Leo.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
All right, very good. We'll go right into new business since this is a workshop. First up, Sawtooth Township Fire -- oh, what am I doing?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. We've advertised this as not a workshop.
Oh!
This is a special meeting, so you can take action on any of these items tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. All right then, thank you. All right, first up for new business, Sawtooth Township Fire District 2223 budget.
Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, our recommendation or sample motion is there, page two of your packet. You've had a discussion on this item. Staff had collected a number of questions regarding the budget. I have sent that off to Chief Janik. I think he's spreading that out to his staff. And so, there you have it.
All right. Well, entertain a motion to get us started and discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Once again, I'd like to move to approve the Sawtooth Township Fire District FY 2223 budget as presented.
All right. Motion by Truster?
I'll support.
All right, second by Becken. All right, it's discussion.
Mayor, may I start, please? I appreciate this week receiving two correspondents. One from legal counsel giving his analysis of the matter. Also pleased to see Mr. Fox's letter committing to giving us some answers to our questions within three weeks. But, you know, actually, more than that, the third piece that really struck me was this weekend. I was really pleased to see the fire department out during the town crier race providing traffic control and security in terms of vehicle movements while people were running in the town crier race. I was also really pleased to see the fire department with their ladder truck and about six of their staff members at Eylee Services for the car show on Saturday. And to me, that was a visible demonstration of their commitment to safety and their support for events in the tri-community area. So based on those three factors, I feel like I am ready to vote on the matter today.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
I also had a chance to talk with Township Fire Board member Rick Beckman. We had a great discussion and some of the questions that I had, he was able to walk through some of those with me. Most of them were clarifying questions. They weren't really about, hey, we're not going to approve this budget. It was more just some clarifying questions to understand things better. So Rick walked through those with me. And we also decided, you know, the next time the Fire District budget comes up, if we're involved earlier in the process, that will help tremendously. Then we can ask those questions early on before they work so hard on their budget, getting that together. Also, listen to the Fire Board meeting on June 20th. And there's some really interesting things that they're working on as towards the advanced life support and some survey that it sounds like they're going to put out to the public. And I look forward to hearing more about that. But otherwise, I too am in support of the Fire Department budget.
All right. Who else? Anyone else? I had a chance to listen in on the Fire Board meeting the other day as well and recognize that they have formed a subcommittee to meet with staff and attorneys to see whether or not approval from the three jurisdictions is even required. I'll anticipate a follow-up on that. So they went on ahead and approved the budget and they'll then meet with their attorneys. So we'll wait for our representatives to give us a report on that. The EMS transport survey is part of Chris Mantell's research project that he's doing. And they'll be moving ahead with that survey. I reached out to Chris yesterday and encouraged him to use the three municipalities, both the webpage and the eBlast system, which is a pretty effective way to get responses to surveys like that. And then he indicated he'd be coming back to each municipality and presenting a PowerPoint presentation on his results and what they learned from that. The other item I found very interesting and I'd like some more information on is the $750,000 that apparently it costs to have one EMS ambulance at a station. That was rather surprising to me and I'd like to see some more information on that. So I'll follow up on that. But other than that, I'm good to go. Any other comments? All right, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, next up, we have the zoning board of appeals appointments. Basically, this is a process that we go through whenever we have openings or terms are expired on board. I have worked with Cindy Osman and connected and the chair of this committee. And basically, Bob was helpful in letting me know that Jim Muir would like to be reappointed and Jim Hunterizer also reappointed as an alternate. I spoke with Richard Crawford, who's been on the planning commission for about 13 years, and asked him to move over and pick up a spot that was left vacant as a result of Zach Zerfus no longer responding. With Richard's 13 years on planning commission, I think that's a good transition and a really good use of his expertise in that area, given what we're currently dealing with and what we'll probably be dealing with in the future. So those are the recommendations that you have in front of you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointments as presented.
Second, Leo.
All right, motion by Stanton, second by Leo. Any discussion, questions?
All good people.
If you may indulge me for a moment, I'd like to say a few things about Rich Crawford if I could.
Yeah.
And I'll state that he's probably one of my best friends, if not one of my oldest friends. He and I actually went to kindergarten together, I hear you. So, having said, this is more for my preference, thinking that we're losing something on the planning commission based on Rich's rich history in Sawtooth. His grandfather actually, if you knew anything about the nautical history of Sawtooth, his grandfather had the Crawford Line, which was a freight transport shipping company. Actually worked out of the Red Dock, shipping produce, lumber, people. Okay, on Great Lakes. His dad was a longtime owner of the, an editor of the commercial record. And Rich has not only been on the planning commission for 13 years, he probably has combined 20 years' experience on the city council and has two terms as mayor. So I just, that's the type of, I guess, history I'd like to see as a local, okay, as a lifetime local of Sawtooth, too. Because I think that's something that, with all the changes that have transpired, you know, and Sawtooth is a, you know, a lot of turnover in the community. And so, and this is certainly no indictment of Mark. Mark and I've had several meetings over the, you know, discussions of the last, the year especially. But I just wanted to bring that up. I have no doubt that Rich will do a fantastic job on his ZBA. And I did talk to him. And being a dedicated public servant, he said he would honor, you know, and work as hard as he could in that capacity. But I just felt that we should at least recognize his past and Rich's history, his and his family and the city.
So noted, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor? Would echo Mayor or Councilman Becken's comments about Rich Crawford. I've known Rich not quite as long as Mark, but long enough. And Rich is a very gracious and eligible person. And I've had the opportunity to work with him as the council representative of the planning commission for the past year. And Rich is as engaged with that group as any one of us. Brings a unique perspective to the planning commission. And I expect he will bring a unique perspective to the ZBA as well. I don't know Mr. LaChe yet, but I look forward to having an opportunity working with him. A couple of thoughts is, I still am struggling with understanding the compelling reason with an opening on the ZBA, of not having Mr. LaChe move to that seat and moving Mr. Crawford off the planning commission. I just don't see a compelling reason to do that. That doesn't mean I'm going to stand in the way of it, but I'm just trying to understand as people ask me questions about this change, what drove the decision?
Okay, any other comments? So noted.
That's a question.
This is a meeting and we're not getting agents. This is what's a mayor prerogative, so.
Second, second, second comment is going forward, I think out of a collaborative and good government approach, it would be beneficial to meet with respective chairs of the boards, commissions, before appointments get their feedback, before the appointment is moved forward. I think that's a good collaborative approach, transparent approach. And I think it just is looking better on the government, looking better on the city and the council.
So noted. Other comments?
Well, since we're doing endorsements, I think the world of Jim Muir. He was my first chairman of the planning commission as I started my brief service on that. And over the years, he's done a lot to support Sawtooth and served well. So I'm very much in favor of his appointment.
Likewise, Jim was the chair when I came on the planning commission.
Many years of service to the city.
Yep. And Jim Hunterizer's been a very good member in the last year, so it's nice to have him on for a full term. All right, anything else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving on, planning commission appointments. Richard Harford, Dick Harford, term expired. He was a replacement, so I'm trying to remember who he was a replacement for, who left, escaping.
Ben Meter, Mr. Ben Meter.
All right. And then Mark LaChe, who had applied previously at the same time as Richard and we at that time appointed Richard. So these are the appointments. No need to re-interview Mark LaChe when he'd already been put through that whole process. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve mayor's appointments.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments as presented.
Second.
All right.
Can you entertain a moment for me to introduce myself to the council?
Sure, come on up.
I think it's outside of your usual procedure, but since several of you don't know me, this, I've been coming to Sawtooth for 40 years. I'm not a newbie. I've lived in this town full-time longer than many of you who are sitting there, nine and a half years. Live on the corner of Grand and Main, an 1884 house built by a shipbuilder. Separately, 30 years ago, I served on a planning commission on a city of comparable size, suburban Michigan, suburban Detroit called Pleasant Ridge. Served on that for a term and then served 14 years on a city commission for the city of Pleasant Ridge. So I think I believe, bring both a historical and heartfelt perspective to Sawtooth as well as actual boots-on-the-ground, hands-on experience in handling planning commission-type things. So I am excited to help the city of Sawtooth and help the planning commission in this regard. And any of the city council members who want to get ahold of me, talk to me more, have grab coffee, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Motion by Leo, second by Gardner, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right. All right, next up, we have Oval Beach passes. Mr. Manager, would you like to start this one?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. This is on page 19 of your packet. I'm just going to briefly go through the description for the benefit of the audience and council members. So in early June, I made an executive decision after conferring with you to issue all city staff permanent full-time and seasonal employees Oval Beach passes. One per employee. Operating under the logic, as it reads here, of expressing gratitude to the employees that, to enjoy the assets that they work so hard to maintain. After my decision, I was made aware of a 2010 policy that required city council to approve complementary beach passes. That policy is included in your packet on the back of page 19, so that would be page 20. I also approved a beach pass for a Hope College professor who's been doing some work at Oval Beach studying the Dune Systems for a number of years. And she brings her students out and have her research paper. I sent it to Scott Dean because he's a science nerd. Oh, I'm sorry, he's the science guy. But it's interesting stuff, so happy to send that out to the rest of council if you want it. Additionally, you know, I would not be opposed to offering passes to full-time contracted employees, limited to the city attorneys, the police, in addition to council, if they wanted it, council members. You know, it's my belief that we should encourage people that service our community to enjoy it after hours on the weekends. And I think it also adds a very unique perspective to be in that environment during non-business hours. And I talked to Peter about this because I guess historically, the city had issued beach passes. And I talked to him earlier and he was like, yeah, we were offering up to like 200 passes. And it included like committee members and the fire department and Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority and whatever. The number got up to 200. I don't know exactly how that happened. That said, and kind of thinking this through after Peter's comments, I was like, okay, where do we, where do we start with this? And maybe it's to city employees, city contracted workers. That being said, I did get an email about this issue for fire department members. And it was like, I hope, the email was directed to me. And they were saying, I hope it was an oversight that you did not include the fire members. Wasn't an entire oversight, but that being said, I would totally support issuing beach passes to emergency service workers who would be out at Oval Beach. Period, I guess. Because, I mean, if somebody needed help, who better than to have a bunch of emergency service employees out there? So I'm just going to leave it at that. I thought it was a good idea, you know, just an extra perk to express gratitude. And I was pretty pleased with my decision, but I, after finding out about this rule, wanted to bring it to council.
All right, very good. Well, entertain a motion to get us started and then we'll have discussion, please.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the motion as described in the description.
Second, please.
Second?
Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. All right, discussion.
I could give a historical perspective.
I figured you would.
Don't be surprised.
Bring it in, bring it in.
Or, I remember this quite, quite well. Back at that time where it would cost all five bucks to get into the Oval Beach, we were looking at having to replace repaved parking lots, repaved Paramount Street, put up the new entrance. And then look, balance that against all the treaties we're giving out. At the same time, we're giving one free pass to every property owner, everybody who had a tax bill, just one. But then we ran into some people who had maybe 15 or 20 condos, half a dozen properties, and they were being shit given out to all the people, they're short-term rentals. And we start crunching these numbers, I think that was even before Pete. And it turned out to be, relatively speaking, a pretty big, you know, hit to the Oval Beach revenues that we wanted to raise to continue all these improvements we had to do. Fire district was involved with that, just pretty much accurate what Ryan said amongst all the boards and commissions. We then instituted 50% for property owners on one tax bill. Cut everybody, cut everybody off. So that's what the, I think, as I recall, what the decision was based on. It was strictly a revenue-producing move to help supplement the incredible amount of investment we had to make out at the Oval Beach. So that's that. I'm willing to discuss or think about what Ryan's brought up to the city employees. I'm not too, if I may just expand on that, I'm not too keen on including paid contracted employees. We pay them pretty handsomely. I think they can afford an Oval Beach pass out of their appreciation for working for the city. So that being said, you know, I haven't thought about it a whole lot. It's, I don't know how many you're talking about, 20, 30, 40, 40. I don't know how many people are in the fire district anymore, probably 25 there.
So to give a little bit of information, because I wanted some data from Ryan on this because I was curious why this policy had been started, what, 12 years ago? And I thought maybe it might have to do with revenue. So I asked him to go back. He went back as far as 2008. So at that time, the balance in the fund was 184,500. And it is now, shoot.
Madam Mayor, this is yearly revenue that we're talking about.
Yearly revenue. The balance as of 6/20/22 is 520,316 dollars. So as far as it being a hit in any way to the Oval Beach income.
Yeah, except in fairness, it was a $5 rate, was the 180, so that would be 360 in today's dollars.
Right, my point being that we have a nice, a really nice cushion there. And, yeah, to be able to recognize staff and think that would be very nice.
Fair, if I may, you know, we're in heated competition with other communities for staff. You know, I would hate for us to go back to a situation like last year where we were short-staffed. So anything we can do to attract, keep staff, build a spread of core among staff, I'm in favor of. I actually think your idea around first responders getting a beach pass to be a force multiplier if there's an incident is actually a very good idea. And I think, you know, we have the ability, beyond what the mayor has said in terms of the numbers, you know, we can look at this for a couple of years. You know, we can try it, we can gather some data over maybe a couple of seasons. If we see we're seeing a negative impact on beach revenues, then we can revisit. But I think in the current environment with, you know, the competition for workers, I'm in favor of this. And indeed, I'd be willing to leave it in the city manager's discretion on how he wants to, you know, who he wants to give them to and when. I mean, within reason, obviously, you know, but I trust him to use good judgment in that regard. And frankly, I'd be very open to a conversation about doing something else around employee engagement and thanking the employees at the end of the summer season. Because things are running, from what I've seen, I've been on the beach a few times already this summer, things seem to be running very well. The staff are very visible, they're working hard. And I would entertain some type of event or something that we could put on to thank city staff for a lot of hard work this summer. Because once again, it's very competitive in the labor market right now and I would hate to lose some of this experience that we're building up on the team. So, yeah, I'm okay with trying it for a couple of years, then we'll see where we are.
Madam Mayor, this is a great opportunity. I was so surprised when this came up because I've been having conversations with city staff in the past week about my beach pass that got stolen from my car. So anyway, when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, wow, this is great, one opportunity. And the threads that I'm hearing in the conversation are something that I've been concerned about, or not even concerned about, but the motivation behind Ryan's action, I think, is great. What incentive, but really, what truly incentivizes our staff? And I sent an email earlier today, copied the mayor and the mayor pro tem, sent it to the treasurer and the city manager with some budget line items that I'd like to see us include. One is an employee engagement survey. To really see what staff thinks about what really brings them into work here. I mean, an Oval Beach pass, out of all due respect, is probably not going to be a retaining item for all staff. Not to disagree with it, but I don't necessarily know if it's going to be a retaining item, but I'd really like us to know what incentivizes the employees. And I think an employee engagement survey, I think, would give us some information on that and opportunities. So I think that opened up that opportunity to me. Also, too, in regards to passes to some of these other different constituencies, I think it would be important to maybe have more conversation about what that should include or shouldn't include. I would support something along the lines of giving the city manager the flexibility to have 20 passes on hand that he could hand out at his discretion and use that as an incentive for maybe someone who's gone out of their way to help the city out in some form or fashion. But that way, he's got the latitude to do that, doesn't need to come back to council and ask that question. I think that would be a great way to give him a little bit of leeway as well as to allow him to incentivize people. And there isn't but a week that goes by that I don't have some. As a matter of fact, this last Saturday, I was sitting with a resident who is where we're going through the budget. And he specifically asked me, he says, Russ, are you going to be putting in a line item to give all taxpayers a free beach pass? This literally comes up on average a week, once a week for me. So the reason I mention that is I think there's an opportunity right now to kind of maybe step back for a minute, take action on the item that's on our agenda today, but then look at this long-term and set this up for success going forward. I think this is a great opportunity. I was so pleased when I saw this, it's like wonderful, what an opening for some of the things I've been thinking about and talking with our constituents about, so.
So, Mr. Manager, if you can put that on the list for December strategic planning session.
Should be great. Can do. Madam Mayor, if I may quickly, the beach pass number that was stolen is number 32.
Oh.
Yeah, so stay on the lookout for a beach pass number 32. Tackle 32.
All right.
Yes.
That's all good. Other comments?
I just want to say I support offering passes to all full-time contracted employees and first responders.
Motion as presented, okay. Other discussion?
Complete.
Yes, anybody else? All right, so the motion in front of us is to approve this motion as described. So at the manager's discretion.
Hold on.
Hold on for a second, please.
Madam Mayor, would you like to include our first responders? That specifically not included is the fire department, but their first responders, right? And so would you like to add that to the motion or to the description? That's kind of what I heard.
My sense was everybody was in support of first responders.
I'm in favor to incentivize them to spend their downtime at our beach where they can be of benefit to the community in an incident, absolutely. I think it's a no-brainer.
And I'll toss out, do you consider Cal Lake employees first responders? They come out in the middle of the night, they're on call 24 hours a day.
I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about health and safety. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about a heart attack, a drowning.
That's the point you get into, where do you draw the line? And I think that was the part of the emphasis in decision-making back in 2010. Somewhere, you have to draw the line. And again, how do you leave out one group and include the other group? So like a known definition of a contracted employee, too. But, you know, so I'm just tossing it out. Apparently not, so that's okay, too.
Just as a reminder, it's often hard for us, I think, sometimes to remember that we hire our professional staff, including our manager, and ask that, in this case, he uses discretion to make very wise decisions based on the conversation and comments that we've had at workshops and council meetings. We've hired him for this purpose, I trust him for this purpose. So when I say at his discretion, I mean at his discretion. That's why we have him here. He understands he's here, boots on the ground every day, interacts with the staff and the broader community. And so he's very aware of how far this message of thanks can go. And I trust that he will make that decision wisely.
Madam Mayor, point of order. Could I have the clerk please read the official motion in totality, please? I want to know what I'm voting on.
Jamie, let us know if you need some help.
What would you like?
Let us know if you need some help with the motion.
Sure.
As I heard. Well.
What did you get, I can do it if you want.
No, I have some notes. Well, you go ahead, Madam Mayor.
So moving, motion to approve the motion as described in the description to include our first responders and at the city manager's discretion. Those are the notes I've written.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. So will that include a limited number of contracted employees, including engineers, attorneys, and police?
This is at the manager's discretion. Right, okay. Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken.
No.
Yes.
Gardner.
No.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. Next up, we have resolution regarding the Public Act 152 compliance. Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is an item that comes up every year in front of the council. We have Peter Stanislavsky who can brief us on what this language actually means. So Peter, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
Please.
Peter, you'd be happy to brief the council.
Basically, there's three options. This is the employees, health insurance. This is the employees' health insurance that has always been a hundred percent paid by the city. And state legislators, through Act fifty-one, we have to agree to one of the three options. Opt out of the law, which basically that means that this city of Sagittuck will still continue to pay one hundred percent of the health insurance premiums. Or there's an eighty-twenty, which basically the employees that would be responsible for twenty percent of their health insurance. Or there's what they call the hard cap in the state of Michigan. Human Health Services has a department, they basically say this is what the average family plan is. Double husband and wife plan or single person plan is for the year. And anything above and beyond that, the employee is on basically would be a payroll deduction. And is it, and to opt out of it every year, to make them exempt, to make it where it's a hundred percent of the employer paying the premium, we have to do this resolution. It's in the law. And so basically, it originally started, I think, in two thousand and twelve at the state level to, it was to anybody that got state revenue sharing. So basically then after a couple of years into it, all the county road commissioners realized they don't, this law does not apply to them. So then they created this, the new updated law that included. So basically, if we don't, we have to send something into the state for Act fifty-one. If we don't, they're going to start withholding the, the basically the gas tax money from the city. So, and it has to be done by resolution every year.
Okay. Got it.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
So this, um, resolution acts as a benefit to our employees.
Got it.
Um, and we still receive the revenue. Um, yeah, so this is basically an, an, an employee incentive, going back to some earlier points that were made during the council, council meeting.
All right.
So we're not losing any money.
No.
Yeah. And we're providing our, our, our employees' benefits.
Yeah. Have we voted on this every year?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. All right. Very good. I just didn't want to do anything to jeopardize losing Act fifty-one.
Basically, as I understand it, this gives the city the opportunity to, to, uh, structure their own employee benefit program. Not necessarily comply with the whims of the state or the direction of the state.
All right. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Well, I'd, I'd move to approve, uh, resolution number two-two-zero, excuse me, six-two-seven C as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Truster, second by Stanton. Other questions or discussions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
B?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Last up, capital improvement budget.
Madam Mayor, uh, this item is on page twenty-six. If you recall, at the last meeting, uh, council had asked that, uh, I bring back the strategic planning items that you had, uh, December of two twenty-twenty-one. Um, and so basically what's happening here is that, um, I, I brought back the essential items that were voted on by the council in separate categories. So we have city op, city operations, infrastructure, parks and recreation, economic development. Um, some of these priorities that fall under these categories as the, the essential items are administrative in nature. And that, you know, these are what you would call staff costs or hidden costs. Uh, so not all of them are actually capital in, improvement items. Um, and so they don't really require a specific budget allocation as a capital improvement. Um, and, and please note, uh, as you see these dollar figures, that staff and council will still have to adhere to the purchasing policies, uh, set forth. Meaning that if we go out to bids, um, you know, council still votes on these items. It's not money that the, the staff gets to spend freely. Um, if you don't spend in any of these dollars in, in these categories, uh, they just return back to fund balance. Uh, as an example, right now, um, and this will play into the conversation today. Uh, right now, we're looking at a projected fund balance of four, roughly four hundred thousand dollars. So the, the ask as we get into for another budget discussion on Monday, uh, is going to be to take six hun, to, so we have a total of a million dollars that I place into all of the categories. Uh, broken down into city operations, infrastructure, parks and recreation, economic development. So what I would be recommending to council is that you put six hundred thousand dollars audio reserves plus the four hundred thousand dollars fund balance transfer into the next year equalling the one million dollars. And what this, what this helps council with is that you don't have to do a, a budget amendment. You have those dollars available to you, um, to spend as you wish, as you move forward. Now, no doubt, you're going to have to, uh, discuss which of these items are, are priorities. Um, but that's the basic idea. Um, in addition to that, you'll, you'll have your, I think it's like a twenty-five page document that I'll be submitting to you all. Which is a full budget narrative and a breakdown of pie charts and all that fun stuff, uh, which you'll be receiving by end, end of the week. Um, but this is what you asked for, and then also included, um, is the full list of the, of the projects. Um, broken down into essential, desirable, acceptable, and deferrable. Again, I just presented the essential items for the purposes of the budget discussion.
And as I recall, we also had a, a resident survey that we did before the strategic planning mission that gave a pretty clear indication of where our residents were at with, uh, priorities for the city.
This is true.
Okay. This is just a general discussion item, so.
Just a, a quick observation on, um, the infrastructure bullet items. Um, Holland and fiber, public wifi. Same thing, right? Should those be consolidated?
They should.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And, yeah, the, the discussions continue to be around bandwidth that I'm having with constituents. Um, people are thrilled about the small cell. Uh, people are very excited to hear what happens with AT&amp;T and what's going. Compliments to the DPW crew for, for helping AT&amp;T get up to Mount Baldur yesterday. But, um, yeah, I, I, I would very much like to see, um, discussion with, uh, Holland Water and Light about the, um, where the fiber terminates and feasibility of, of launching public wifi in Sagittuck. If, if it can be done securely and, uh, cost-effectively, I think, um, can really be a game changer for us. More and more people are looking to come here. And, you know, nobody, as much as we all like to go to the beach and be offline, a lot of us can't. So I, I'd be very supportive of really bumping up bandwidth.
I think it's important to remember too, these are all items that will take staff time, um, with the limited staff that we have. Um, so it'd be nice, I think, if, if you could connect with who on staff will take lead on this. Obviously, you know, the five-year parks plan will be with the committee and Scott. But, you know, you'll probably have Kate take the lead on some of this and you and yourself. So it'd be good to see how you're going to divvy it up, I mean, because they can only do so much.
Yes, ma'am.
So. Other comments?
Just to build on what you said, Mayor, um, I would also be supportive, Ryan, of, you know, if you need to bring in a consultant or an expert for some of these one-offs. You know, if you, if you need a public wifi expert, somebody that not only knows how to get it done, but somebody that's, you know, paying attention to some of the infrastructure opportunities in the state around, uh, bandwidth and, you know, community wifi, things of that nature. You know, I'd be supportive if you need to bring in extra help for, for discrete projects to get some of this stuff done.
Yeah. I agree with that. That'd be a wise use of time, energy, and dollars. Yeah. Other, yes, Ken?
Yeah, I was just, um, searching through here and, and I apologize for my faulty memory. But didn't we discuss public restrooms downtown, uh, as part of our priorities? And I can't find them anywhere here.
Oh, I'm sure they're in there somewhere.
Here we are, bathroom repairs, infrastructure.
Well, not repairs.
Sure, I saw that.
Could be, I, I hesitate to say Coffin Park, but that's what everybody thought of.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we need to study having some restrooms downtown somewhere, whether it's Coffin Park or some other.
As far as the cost of it, yeah.
This would be a great thing to throw in the hopper for your new Parks and Public Works Committee.
I'd be busy. Ken, Ken makes a very good point, though. Um, you know, it, to bump up our ability to serve people with bathroom facilities when we flex and get like quadrupled the size in the summer would be, would be huge. And I've got a lot of sympathy for what the DPW team is doing. Um, if anybody wants to see some pictures on Scott Herbert's phone of things that the crew have had to deal with in some of our public restrooms, um.
I, I would recommend that you aren't going to eat food or have not recently had any food.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. Now, this, this, a topic actually came up this morning with, uh, a colleague in, with the city of Douglas. They're having the same issues, whether it's at the root beer barrel or down, um, at the park, you know, Berry Field. They're having the same issue as far as, you have so few restrooms for so many people. Even though they probably don't see nearly as much traffic as we do, they still see quite a bit. And so it's an issue that they're facing as well. It's worth a conversation with your colleagues over there, see what they're going to do.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Other, great start.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is wonderful. I think this is, thank you very much, Ryan, for, and the staff for getting this all together and incorporating the items from the strategic planning sessions, while the resident survey. We're on the right path here, absolutely. And, um, the email I sent earlier today actually includes a few of the items that are included here, which is, which is great. So the city hall painting, um, the other thing that, uh, I did bring up was in terms of city operations is, uh, the planning commission at its meeting on last, uh, June nineteenth, recommended unanimously approved a recommendation that twenty-five thousand dollars be added to the, uh, Department seven twenty-one Planning and Zoning for, uh, the coming fiscal year for the tri-community master plan update and zoning ordinance, housekeeping, and improvements. We have an ongoing, uh, project with the, with the zoning administrator and the planning commission to continue to look at our zoning code to make sure it is, um, that not only up to speed with the tri-community master plan, which is coming out for renewal in twenty-twenty-six, but also just generally speaking. Um, the other thing that I put into my email was, uh, for the city administration, uh, Department one seven-three is Sagittuck three-one-one. Uh, I'd like to see us put some money specifically to a Sagittuck three-one-one program, which essentially create a single point of contact system for the community to make service and information requests. I've had this conversation with DPW superintendent, city manager, other council members. And I think we could become more efficient if we had a system in place that would help manage those requests. It is intensive, the, the amount of things that come to the city staff. Um, and, and I just think that would be a great investment. Uh, the employee engagement survey, which I mentioned, I'd like to see us move on that. I think that would be, um, I think beneficial for everybody. Um, the other thing that, in my last item, was a paperless city. Um, something that I like to see the city do is, uh, implement a process to convert city council boards and commissions from a paper-based to paperless system. I recommend a fifteen thousand dollar allocation for that specifically. Uh, we're in the day and age where, um, I think we could help our staff become more efficient by going paperless and some of the other things that are out there, many other companies have done this already, and I'd like to see the city do that too. Uh, call it progressive, whatever you want to call it, I think it's an opportunity for us to improve our performance as well as our cities, free things up for them, reduce the copping, um, all of the things that go along with that. Um, that was something I would love to see the city do as well. And even though it doesn't fall strategically into the list of items, um, I think it's important for us. Um, and just in closing, uh, realizing that we have a limited constrained resource in city staff and hours and, and, uh, incredibly busy during the summer. I'm willing to step in and help on some of these projects that I've specifically recommended if I can be of assistance. And I think council does serve a purpose in helping the staff in certain ways with projects. I'm willing to offer my time to do that. Specifically things that I think are of benefit to our residents, most importantly, as our visitors and our staff.
So Russ, you referenced an email. To whom did that email go?
Went to you, went to the mayor pro tem, it went to the city manager, treasurer, zoning administrator, city clerk, and the Kate's position, which is project manager.
All right. So I, I think it's important as city council members for us to remember our role and the proper means of communication. So we've talked about this many times, um, and I'll bring it up again. It's in our city charter as far as our restrictions concerning officers. Item C, except for the purpose of inquiries and investigations, the council or its members shall deal with city officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the manager solely through the manager. And neither the council nor its members shall give orders to any such officer or employee, either publicly or privately. So please, in the future, this is the second time now.
Madam Mayor.
If I may, this is just standard professional procedure. So that I would ask sincerely.
Let me open the statement in the email. Hello, Ryan and Peter. In absence of the submission process of which I am unaware, I request that the following budget items be included in the city's twenty-twenty-three budget. Looking forward to your feedback and council's thoughts on these items. No direction given.
Yeah. You're not to direct, you're not to direct communications to city staff, you're to direct it to the city manager solely. That's why we hire him. This is his job. So other items?
Notice.
Discussion on this budget.
Okay. I have a question for, for, will this be included, this, this, unless we change it or it'll be included in part of our budget approval process?
Yes.
So we're not going to have any special, you know, motions or anything.
Correct.
You are just incorporating this into the budget hearing.
Yes.
The approval process.
What we'll be doing is, yeah, taking the four hundred thousand dollars of fund balance from this year, putting it into the budget, adding another six hundred thousand from reserves. Peter has broken this down into some separate categories and it'll just be included as part of your, your budget approval. So we're not going to go through this process again.
By the way, I, I, I think this is a, a good approach.
Yeah.
It's good budget policy that you set priority projects. If you're raising money, you better start spending some of it.
That's right.
So.
Yes.
Taxpayers' money.
Yep.
Indeed. Look forward to seeing a lot of these getting done. Thank you. All right. Anything else on that? All right. With that, we're at the public comment portion of our meeting. If anybody is here, would like to step up to the podium, introduce themselves, please state your, uh, place of residence and please limit your comments to three minutes, please. Over here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mayor, and members of the council and staff. My name is Dale Harrison. I live at thirty-one oh eight sixty-second Street in Sagittuck Township. I'm here today on a number of matters, but I'd like to have a handout that I'd like you to review sometime later after I speak, not during my, my talk, if you would. Talk a little bit about Bridge. See it on the agenda quite often. Um, back in March, we had a property owner meeting about the proposed, um, necessity of property owners in that district in the CR one residential zone that they have to commit to hooking up to soup, hooking up to water. Um, it's kind of a mandatory thing, but at that time and still today, there is no, there is no water. And I, I kind of addressed some of my concerns and my request to amend parts of the zoning organs in the public works, I think it's chapter, um, title five, chapter fifty-two and fifty-one, relating to some of these issues where we're really, the property owners are getting into this double jeopardy thing. Um, there's four property owners, um, on Bridge Street that have billable sites. Three of them now have permits for septic systems. One has built one, two are, I think are proposed, Tim Lockers, and, and it works for one. Two have private wells, or one has for a private well, Tim's going to put in a well. And I propose on my parcel at, um, eleven eleven sixty-nine Bridge Street to, and in your future, have my own private well. In the meantime, Sagittuck is moving forward, at least at some pace, to, um, create a, a water infrastructure system. It's problematic for all of us because it's going to be really expensive and we've gone to the expense, or are going to, going to the expense of creating and having our own wells put in. Um, without getting into the sewer issue, which I addressed a little bit in my request for the zoning change amendments. I'd hoped years ago, and I petitioned, Mark probably remembers that, requested the board, I think it was two thousand and nine, to establish a water and sewer special assessment district, and it ended, that ended up not going anywhere. Since selling my, a lot to Tim Locker, I've kind of shifted my position on this. I don't think there's a need for sewer or water on the west side of Bridge Street. On the other side of Bridge Street, that's a different matter. I think people are already connected to the, uh, infrastructure for sewer and water.
Okay.
So I asked you to look at that. Um, I am a little concerned, uh, if I get running a little bit late, can you give me like a thirty second?
Sure.
We had a meeting in March, um, and historically I've had lots of meetings with city managers and college supervisors and trustees. And we had a pretty productive meeting, but at the end of that meeting, there was an understanding amongst the property owners, myself, Tim Locker, Patrick Carey, uh, Pat, Patrick Carew, rather, and Harrington to do trust. Anyway, we thought there was going to be a follow-up meeting before things got pushed along to where there's an actual bid going. Pat, Patrick Carew, rather, and Harrington Pudoo Trust. Anyway, we thought there was going to be a follow-up meeting before things got pushed along to where there's an actual bid going out and the city council deciding on beforehand what the process was going to be, how they were going to assess everybody. Uh, I think it's really critical on the communication and or the management style and to have stakeholders at a meeting with the city manager, someone from the Kamazola Lake Sewer and Water Authority, like we did when Mark was at that meeting, and a couple of trustees, so that when it gets back to a presentation by the city manager to the trustees, everybody's got a better understanding of what some of the issues are. So I asked that you, um, if you would postpone the meeting on the twenty-seventh as far as taking up the special assessment district, uh, request the city manager to hold a, a meeting with stakeholders. There's only four or five of it, or five of us. And maybe a couple, um, trustees or councilmen, at least one that's a member of the Kamazola Lake Sewer and Water Authority attend. I'd really appreciate that.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Dale.
Anyone else?
It's hard to stand up my age, advancing years. Uh, two quick things. Um, one I want to echo, probably not as eloquently as Mark or, or Russ did. Oh. That's my name and where am I from? Dan Fox, City Sagittuck, echoes your eloquent comments about, uh, Richard Crawford. He has been a joy to work with and a true asset. And to your point directly, on the planning commission, having representation that goes back with enough history to remember stuff, basically the rest of us, s- some more than others, but no one goes anywhere near Sarback as, as rich. So that perspective is helpful. It's helpful literally at every meeting. So we'll miss it. Uh, speaking of things you'll miss, I miss the more consultative approach between the chairman of the planning commission, yours truly, and the mayor and the, and the zoning administrator on appointments and thoughts and why things are going one way or another, just to, just to chat it out. That's not a an indictment. These are the mayor's prerogatives, and I understand that, and they've always been that way to my knowledge. Um, but I miss them. And it, I know it didn't take place in the case of the planning commission appointment. It also, I'm reliably told, didn't take place in the case of the CBA appointment, where they're getting somebody they've, in, in the person of Rich that they've never talked to or known. So anyway, I miss those things. So, uh, but again, I cannot speak more highly of Rich, and it's, it's a, it's a hole in the, in the commission. Big shoes. Where's? Big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill. Um, also, um, the comment about the, the fire board, I take, uh, I take, uh, I, I appreciated that ki, your comment. I have to point, cause say names up here. And I invite all of you at any time. I mean, you're all obviously citizens. You're all constituents and of the fire board of the jurisdictions we represent. You are welcome at any time to come to those meetings, to come to part of the meetings. If you just, I mean, the agendas are published, just like here. The meetings are on, on Zoom. They're also on YouTube after. Lots of interesting things going on there. It's honestly, in my understanding of things, it's better to ask questions there than to run questions up through me and then to here and then back and through me. You get a bet faster answer and, and, and a more quality, have a better quality answer to deal with it one-on-one at the time. So I request four, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Madam Clerk? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Second. Motion by Stanton, second by Dean. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed?